Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order our regular scheduled council meeting for November 9th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony consistent with the National Anthem, followed by a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members that have given their lives while defending our country. Would everybody please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Mr. Miller, you want to take the roll, please?
Mayor Walker.
Here. Mayor Pro Tim Kerwin.
Here.
Councilmember Squires, show her absent and excuse, please. Councilmember De Michael.
Here.
Councilmember Earl. Show him absent and excuse, please. Councilmember Jacob.
Here.
Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember Squires and Councilmember Earl are under the weather a little bit. We hope they're feeling better and we'll hopefully see them at the next meeting. At this time, we'll move on to item four, approval of the agenda as presented.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the approval of the agenda for Monday, November 9th, 2020, as presented.
Support.
Councilmember De Michael, any comments from the table, from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, five zero. We have no recognition tonight. I don't see any state or county officials here tonight, so we'll move on to a presentation. We have two new police officers getting sworn in tonight. I'm going to call up Chief Tim Givens to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Yes, two officers sworn in tonight. The first is Christopher Dorazio, Christopher's from Canton, where he was raised, but then shortly after he graduated high school, went down to New Orleans, became a police officer. Went to the academy and spent a couple of years there. He got a little homesick. I don't know if it was the alligators or whatever, or just missed mom, dad, and the family, but made the wise choice to come back up to Michigan and apply at the Garden City Police Department, and we gladly hired him. So tonight, we'll be swearing him in, and his mom, Julie, will be pinned on his badge on. But first, Clerk Miller, if you don't mind.
I am Christopher Dorazio.
I am Christopher Dorazio.
Being duly appointed as a fully empowered police officer.
Being duly appointed as a fully empowered police officer.
I do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Michigan.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Garden City.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Garden City.
And I will uphold and abide by.
And I will uphold and abide by.
The rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
As well as all other orders.
As well as all other orders.
Either general, specific, or otherwise.
Either general, specific, or otherwise.
Of the Garden City Police.
Of the Garden City.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
That I will not at any time.
That I will not at any time.
Lend aid or suffer.
Lend aid or suffer.
To any organization known or suspected.
To any organization known.
Of having subversive tendencies.
Having subversive tendencies.
Nor will I in any way.
Nor will I in any way.
Affiliate myself with such organizations.
Affiliate myself with such organizations.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, Julie?
I think he cheated and wore a vest. She can't get him good. All right, next up will be Officer Jonathan Marcian. Jonathan comes from Dearborn Heights, Michigan. He was a graduate of the prestigious high school, Dearborn Divine Child. Might be where I graduated from, too.
You know, so right there, he had a pretty good opportunity to get hired here.
But then he went on to Wayne State, got his Bachelor's of Science in Colonel Justice, went to work for the Wayne Police Department for the last two years, and now he's come to join us, and we're glad to have him, excited, and hey, you know, Falcons forever, right? So Jonathan, come on up, and the clerk will swear you in.
I am Jonathan Marcian.
I am Jonathan Marcian.
Being duly appointed a fully empowered police officer.
Being duly appointed, fully appointed police officer.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will uphold and defend the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
That I will.
That I will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Michigan.
And the ordinances of the City of Garden City.
And the ordinances of the City of Garden City.
And will uphold and abide by.
And will uphold and abide by.
The rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
As well as all other orders.
As well as all other orders.
Either general, specific, or otherwise.
Either general, specific, or otherwise.
Of the City of Garden City Police Department.
Of the City of Garden City Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
That I will not at any time.
That I will not at any time.
Lend aid or suffer.
Lend aid or suffer.
To any organization known or suspected.
To any organization known or suspected.
Of having subversive tendencies.
Of having subversive tendencies.
Nor will I in any way.
Nor will I in any way.
Affiliate myself with such organizations.
Affiliate myself with such organizations.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And Jonathan's mother, Brenda, will be pinned on his badge on. Thank you, Mayor.
On behalf of Mayor and Council, congratulations to both of you. You're joining a great department. As witnessed here by the support you have, they all come to your swearing in, so we have a great city, a great department, and wish you guys all the best in your career at Garden City. Yeah, a minute or so to clear out. We'll resume in a minute. Okay, we're back in. Move on to item eight, community events. We have none tonight. No petitions or communications, no public hearings. Move on to item 11, the consent agenda. Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the consent agenda, item 11A, 1 through 6, as presented.
Support.
Support from Councilmember De Michael. Any comments from the table, from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, five zero. Moving on to action items B, special event policies and application. Mr. Dougherty.
All right, thank you, Mayor. This is our third policy we put in place. First one was rental of rooms at Maplewood Center, Community Center, which hasn't been done in a number of years, so we've got some good policies in place there for any outside groups. We also had the parade, street closures, kind of protest policy that was put in place just a few weeks ago by this council. What's in front of you now is special event policies. This is for the rental pavilions, city park, maybe church gatherings, music in the park, any outside group wants to put on a car show or some other things. There are two slight changes from what was originally publicized that I want to make mention of on page three. We removed the price structure for rental of ball fields. At this point, that's going to be in a separate policy when it comes to utilizing fields, that along with our youth groups and things. So we took out the cost of field rental for this. This would not be the application used for that. And then on page five, just one subtle change. It did read originally, "Any special event request beyond traditional pavilion rental may need to be submitted to the approved department, fire department, or receive approval from them, as well as the council." We just adjusted the words there to say, "Any special event request beyond traditional pavilion rental, including carnivals, will need to be submitted and approved by the departments." Objective there is, once again, Parks and Recreation has a lot of leeway on renting out facilities and making sure everything's maintained for those groups, but there are those times when an outside, say, a large concert wants to come in the park, or a big Ferris wheel carnival wants to come in one of our parks or a location in the city, that would go through approvals by our police department, fire department, code and compliance, et cetera, and especially come to the city council. And Parks and Recreation knows that already at this point also, that anything out of the norm would come to be on the agenda, so the city council is aware of what is happening. So this is really just another step in the evolution of making sure everything we do in the city is structured and organized. This is for all special events, including such things as concerts, performances, festivals, filming locations. Somebody wants to film in our city, they would go through this process, parties, park events, carnivals, and such. So that's what this is, special event policies. Thank you.
Okay, motions in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember De Michael.
I move to approve a policy that establishes the rules and procedures for hosting special events in Garden City.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Kerwin. Any comments from the table, from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, five zero. At this time, we'll move on to item 12, public comments. This is for items that were not on the agenda tonight. Anybody wishing to speak, please come up to the podium, state your name. There is a three-minute time limit. Anybody wishing to speak tonight?
James Lentz, Director of the Garden City Public Library. Mayor Walker and Council, I am here to speak about the city manager's recent decision to begin charging the library for use of rooms at the Maplewood Center. When the library was relocated to the Maplewood Center in 2006, we were assured by city manager Dave Harvey that we would have free use of the rooms for our meetings and free programs as long as our use did not conflict with the needs of the Parks and Recreation Department. This arrangement continued even after our millage was passed in 2011. When I returned as director in 2013, the question of whether or not to charge the library for use of rooms was again approached. City manager Chief Bob Mury said we were not to be charged. Now, Mr. Dougherty wants to change that longstanding agreement. In part, he says this is because Parks and Recreation Department now runs the Maplewood Center and is tasked with providing programs and services for the residents. This is great news. We know that the community has long asked for more programs and services at the center over and above what the library has been providing. However, please remember that from 2006 to 2011, the Maplewood Center was part of Parks and Recreation, and they provided many programs there. It is not the library's intent, nor has it ever been, to interfere with Parks and Rec's programs or their ability to put programs on. Rather, we have often invited them to collaborate with us and sought ways to collaborate with them. Past administrations saw the value of interdepartmental cooperation and the value in providing space for the library to serve the community. Mr. Dougherty also referenced the library's budget. I will remind Council that of our total budget, only 3,500 is approved for programs. The only way that we are able to provide the great number of programs and the quality of programs that we do is through the generous contributions from local businesses, far too many to mention here, and from organizations like the Friends of the Library, the Kiwanis Club, and the Rotary Club. If we are to pay even the reduced charges the city manager is suggesting, we would be forced to drastically reduce our programs. This would be a great disservice to the residents. As an example, for just the six weeks of the children's summer reading programs, which teachers and school administrators agree is essential in preventing summer slide for our students, the cost for us to use the rooms at Maplewood would be $1,320, and that's based on our use from 2019. That's over one-third of our total programming budget, and it does not include the adult summer programs, nor any of the costs traditionally associated with putting on any of our programs. In the interest of service to the community, I ask you to countermand his decision. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Mr. Jones?
The programs that the library puts on are a boon and a positive feature for Garden City. If anything, they need to be encouraged to do as much as they can and not face incentives to have to cut those programs down, so I speak in favor of not charging the library for these programs when they don't interfere with any of the other Parks and Rec activities.
Anybody else? City managers report.
All right, Mayor, just take a moment to answer what was just stated there. I don't think it was clear enough that the library has a $500,000 budget. $500,000. Their choice of saying $3,000 for programming is, I believe, what they chose to put in their budget. That's not what their budget is. So for the city to take on the additional cost of utilities as well as cleaning up after the functions, we said, maybe there's a chance the library can assist us with some of these costs, and you're looking at $10, $15 for the use of some of these rooms. It may be a big point to say, this is going to cost $1,000. I'm not quite sure the detail of the program. All I received was an email from the library asking to not charge anything for any programs when clearly there's a cost. There is a cost to running programs. What's changed is, in the past, the rental rooms were not used for any outside organizations. Maplewood Center has basically been sitting empty, other than city programs through the FRC and maybe some library activities. We're expecting that to change as we put policies in place now for not just Parks and Recreation to do more in that building, which was not done in the past. It was not truly under Parks and Recreation. It really was under grant funding, so you couldn't have outside organizations. That has changed since the city's taken on the full cost to run the place, not run by grants. Second of all, we put policies in place because we're also looking at expecting to have outside organizations come in utilizing the place much more. So as we look at any groups, the library is clearly an outside organization. They've chosen in several different ways of pointing out that they are an outside organization. I love the library as much as anybody. I love libraries. I don't love old libraries. I love updated technology, programs for youth, and so on. There's a lot of things that can happen in a very productive library, but the question is, why should the city be taking on the cost of library activities when they have a $500,000 budget? So it's very simple, so we said, just pay the half price, which for a lot of times, as we said, $10, $15, or maybe $20 to use a program. What was just mentioned here of the long-stretched-out program, I wouldn't mind hearing a little more detail about that. Obviously, the objective is not to try to charge thousands of dollars for a certain program. I don't think that was anyone's expectation. But at the same time, should the city, taxpayers, take on the cost of the library, who clearly, as we go through this program, has looked at us, we're the tenants, they're the tenant, or we're the landlord, they're the tenant, for the facility. So while if they're going to use more building space than allotted to them, currently, they have the library, they also have the meeting space next door, but they're using a room of 120 people. The seating in the community Maplewood is 120 people. They're having a board meeting of 10 people in that room. As I wrote in my email to Mr. Lentz, I don't believe it makes sense to have a room that seats 120 to have a meeting for 10 or less people. So maybe they can find a different room. We also are giving free rental for the use of their board meetings, so the library certainly isn't charging, we're not charging them for the board meetings that they have, which clearly could be met in another room that they currently have control of. It is, they chose to stretch out into other rooms. We have expenses to those rooms, so we put on a simple cost. That's the issue that we have here, so I don't think it was fully explained of that city manager's being a bad guy here and just charging for programs. There's a story behind the story. So if James would like to come and talk to me about, instead of sending an email to the council, talk to me personally and say, hey, we've got a program that could get excessive, then we can have a discussion about it. But as far as saying all rooms should be free, James was very quick also to put out that the city manager supported libraries in the past. You know, might I remind that the city actually years ago didn't even have a library anymore, brought the library back in the Maplewood Center, so to make it look like I'm the first city manager really to question the library's existence, when for two years, the library didn't exist in 2010, I think that's a little fraught with disaster, that comment. But again, Mr. Lentz can come in to see me, we can talk about bigger programs that are beneficial to everybody, some that are involved with Parks and Recreation working with the library, but just to arbitrarily say the library can use any space they want, that's, you know, with new rules and new structure and new expectations of that building, it shouldn't be that way. And again, library has a half a million dollar budget. The city's paying for all the expenses. Library uses all these other rooms, maybe they should pay at least the cleanup costs and other things that go with the cost of using those rooms. So it's a much different story than what we just portrayed a minute ago. Second part, leaves in the people's yards. Everybody keep in mind, as far as leaves for cleanup, we're looking at the last vegetation cleanup here in the next couple of weeks, so if you're just blowing your leaves into the street, goes into the gutters, affects the gutter system, everybody, just please try to bag your leaves as much as possible so we can pick them up and get them out of the area. Leaves are still falling, I know, but there's some houses, you can see, they just blew it right into the street, and the next place that goes is right down the gutters. Does not help our gutter system. And for that, that's all I have. Mayor?
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilmember Jacobs.
The only thing I have is I want to congratulate Officer Dorazio and Officer Marcian, and congratulations and welcome to the city, and that's all I have.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Veteran's Day is coming up, and I just want to wish, but thank you to all the veterans that served. This Veteran's Day looks a little different, leaving the ceremony, and I know Mayor Walker's really proud of that, and we can't do that this year, so I just want to say thank you. Also, I know the holidays are coming, they're coming, so if you're a family of veterans and you want to donate some canned goods to the Arvo pantry, I am always willing to come and pick them up from your house for you and take them there myself. If you want to take them, you can drop them off at the Maplewood Center on the Bonn Wall side. Been sending an email, I know a lot of people reach out on the Garden City sites, say they have donations and things like that. Thank you, congratulations to the two new officers, welcome to Garden City.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynch.
Yes. First, I wanted to say what a wonderful job I think the City of Garden City did with Halloween. It was just a week ago, basically, a week and a half ago, and the kids were very respectful. I could, unless it was their own little bubble group, they really did try to keep some space in between. Most of the houses that I saw had tables set up, and it was just really well done. I noticed the Halloween lights going down, and in this warm weather, we have Christmas lights going up. So I encourage everyone, especially because it's so darn dark, so early now, it's 6 o'clock. It's wonderful to drive up and down the streets and see the lights out, so I encourage everyone that can to put their lights out. I do want to remind people again about the scams that are going on on the telephone. Just saw tonight, somebody lost $4,000 to a social security scam, and when you're in the middle of a scam, sometimes you don't have the chance to think, and that's what the people on the other end want you to do. If it's too extreme at that moment, instead of worrying about it, it's probably a scam. And I know the police chief would say the very same thing, because that's what they try to get, is people in an emotional state, so you're not thinking, and then you're buying $4,000 worth of gift cards. When did that ever make sense? But when you're all wrapped up in it and you think that they're coming after you for whatever reason, you're going to do silly things like. whatever reason, you're going to do silly things like that. So please, if you don't know the telephone number, let it go to your voicemail. You can always get to it later. And if it's a scam, I bet they don't leave a voice message for you. And then last but not least, I wanted to welcome our two new officers also. Welcome to the Garden City family. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichael.
Good evening. I just wanted to say welcome and congrats to our two new officers, and I'm hoping that they'll feel right at home with our great leadership here. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give you a little report on the election. That was a week ago tomorrow. Just, the day went well for the clerk's office, I think for all the Garden City voters. We handled 15,195 voters on that day, whether at the precincts or through absentee voter ballot counting. That was a total of 66.8% of the registered voters in the city, the largest we've ever had in record, actually, since we've been keeping records. So I wanted to thank the council for their support, the city manager for his support, and the 105 election inspectors that worked on that day, long hours, that were able to get the results done and in. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to give kudos to Mr. Miller. He put in a lot of hours a couple of weeks up to the election, and then on Election Day, I think he put in pretty close to a 20-hour day. That's just incredible, and it had to be done. It was a big election, and he's got to run it, 105 people, 10 precincts, so he did an excellent job, and my hat goes off to you on a job well done. Veterans Day is this Wednesday. If you see a veteran, thank them. Buy them a lunch, buy them breakfast. Give you a little bit of information, according to Veteran Affairs, there's only 300,000 World War II veterans still alive. They're dying at a rate of 348 a day. There's only 300,000 of them left. So if you see an old-timer with a World War II hat on from the Greatest Generation, go up and thank them. And I don't want to take nothing away from the Gulf vets, the guys in Afghanistan, the Gulf War, the Korean War, and especially the Vietnam vets. All the other soldiers came home as heroes. The Vietnam guys came home, got spit on, just total disgrace. We never thanked the Vietnam vets properly. So I would urge you to, if you see a Vietnam vet, to thank them for his, thank them all for their service, but especially the Vietnam guys. They were done wrong, and I think everybody knows that. So remember the vets. It's always 11th month, 11th day at the 11th hour. We won't be holding a ceremony this year because of COVID, the O'Leary Auditorium, and most of the vets are elderly, and that's, they're susceptible to COVID. So we're going to be, Mr. Dan York, our communications director, is going to be showing Veterans Day ceremonies from the last 20 years. They're going to be showing back to back to back. So you're going to see them, I think, starting Tuesday. I think they're going to run all week. I could be wrong on that, but when you go to the Garden City Channel, you're going to see Veterans Day from 1985, '86.